You may test anything that reporting. Thank you. All right, welcome, everybody. Today is Wednesday, January 5th, 2022. Our first meeting of the year for the regular Masconahmatt Regional School Committee meeting. Billy Boujou on the chair, and I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:02. This meeting is being recorded as well as live streamed. I wasn't at first going to give remarks, but I just had to say, just starting off the new year with so many curveballs already coming our way within the first few days. I want to make sure that we thank our administrators and our staff for all the extra work involved with getting, being able to open school this week here at Masconahmatt, making that possible for us. And I just want to thank everyone in our community for doing their part. I just feel like the current situation is yet another reminder of how our individual choices and individual behaviors can impact higher systems and entire communities. For example, as bad as things are, if we had a lower rate of vaccination, we would be in a much worse situation than we are. So in our first meeting of the year, I'm just grateful to those who are taking their part seriously for the sake of our community, for the people in our schools, the teachers, the families of our students and staff, and the healthcare systems that we all count on. Individual choices and behaviors make a difference. They show how much we care for one. Comments from the audience? I see someone is here. So if you have a comment, I think you probably already know, but you come up to the podium here so that we can capture your sound.
Trevor Carrier Middleton. I just wanted to update on the threshold, if you met that for vaccinations and when you plan on sending a letter to Desi from Mass Choice. And that's it.
All right, thank you, Trevor. Nice to see you over the winter break. So just a reminder, I didn't do the whole spiel, but it's not really a Q and A right now, but we have, answer has, was answered at the last meeting, and it's definitely going to be part of our update tonight, I anticipate, so.
The. Just real briefly, we met it, was it the Tuesday before vacation? And then we sent in the letter to Desi and we got it.
The Friday.
Friday, the 17th.
So I think we submitted it to the 18th. I think we submitted it on the 17th. No, we heard back.
Yeah, after the meeting. You submitted, I believe.
Yeah.
I think you heard like the Friday before.
We heard back from them on the 17th approving the waiver. We met the 80% threshold, the Tuesday before the 17th.
Right. 14.
Okay, but and that there's, we also have to satisfy boxers.
Yeah, we have not approached the Box Report of Health at all.
All right. Okay, so I'm going to move along to negotiations update.
So as of our last meeting, we had sent in language to the, I think it was December. We sent language to the union to, to approve in terms of moving forward towards our contract negotiations. And we just heard back from them today. So we, I don't think anybody's really had a chance to look through it yet. So that's all. There's not a lot, nothing's basically happened. The world stood still over the holiday break and extended time.
At least we did get some.
We got something today, yeah.
Yes, that's good.
So we are moving forward. We were eagerly awaiting that, hoping it would come before break, but it didn't. So we will check it out further later this week.
Thank you. Dr. Karabastos, thanks for joining us. We're ready for your update, the report, if you're ready.
So I think the link that you provided is to an actual PDF. And I just sort of screenshot the presentation for these. So what I'm showing, although it's in a different version format, it's the document that you have in front of you. And just quickly, before I move to school improvement plan, just an update on semester exams, because that came up at our last meeting, I think. I'm losing track of time. But given the current situation and really too recent, there's lots of reasons why we shifted away from them. So students will not be taking end of semester exams in two weeks as originally planned. And the two primary reasons for that move was the mental health of our students. And given sort of the heightened anxiety around where we are as a community and as a larger community with COVID, just felt that was the first reason. The second reason was really around anticipated absences, both from students and adults that would make preparation for those exams really difficult and having students and adults alike making decisions about their health based on their need and want to be in school, preparing properly for a semester exam. So again, that's just a highlight, an update from our last meeting, so semester exams won't take place. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about our school improvement plan. And I find the name rather interesting because for me, schools always want to be moving forward and we always want to be improving. And so to sort of highlight in this form, some of the work that we're doing for the benefit of students, sort of move our school forward from an instructional practice place is, it's great that I have the opportunity to share it with you and for us to sort of put in language what we're already doing. So forcing us to think a little reflectively, what are we doing? And how can we share that with the larger community? So this just highlights the makeup of the committee. We have met, excuse me, we've met three times as a group in order to, and really our focus the whole time has been on this school improvement plan. We were a little delayed in getting started, trying to get members to join us. So that was why we didn't kick, hit the ground running back in the fall, but we met three times, twice in December, in order to put our improvement plan together. This is really our, the front page of our website, the first, second, or third page of our student handbook, which speaks to the mission of Masconahmatt High School. And when I interviewed, I really stressed that a strong mission is really important because it helps center and ground a lot of the work you do and the decisions you make. We have also highlighted here the expectations, the student expectations, academic, social, and civic. We would like students to demonstrate when they leave Masconahmatt High School. And some of this work we'll get at, sort of how do we get there? How do we assess? How do we create opportunity for some of the things that we strive or aspire to be? Just a little breakdown of how this worked. So we had sort of three strategic objectives, one related to school culture and climate, one related really to sort of meeting students where they are, moving them forward. And then the third is more globally in the school. What are we doing from a curricular perspective? What instructional practices are we using? And how do we support teachers in order to meet some of them? So that's sort of the structure of the plan. Again, this plan was sort of born out of some of the work that had started last year and then some of the ongoing work based on discussions and work we've been doing all fall. The high school leadership team met, and I sort of outlined who makes up each of those components below, so I won't list them. The school council met twice to really hammer this out. And then faculty were provided an opportunity to meet with me if they had feedback, comments, et cetera, related to the school improvement plan. Sorry. So I'm going to start off, I'm not going to read them because you can read them, but I'm just going to highlight a little bit of information related to this. So the first, their first goal here, the first strategic goal is around school climate and culture, right? So how does it feel to be in our building? What supports do we have in our building to ensure everyone feels safe, healthy? That they can engage fully in the learning experiences that we're trying to provide for students? So the first two really are related to creating, which I've talked about a lot, the sense of belonging. And when you feel connected to something, you tend to perform better, right? So think to a team you may have belonged on, been a part of, you were belong to it, they were really performing well, you were functioning well as a team. A lot of that really had to do with how connected you might have felt to that team. And maybe it didn't go well because you didn't feel as connected. And so belonging is the word that I use a lot. And so the first two really go to that, strive for us to create an environment for students where everybody feels like they belong. So one way to get at that is to sort of create a survey. It's a quick survey. There's a lot of different examples we can use, and the hope would be that we would put this together as a group of people, a group of adults in the building and students, and get that out to students so we can evaluate that work. Harvard University has an example, New England Association of Schools and Colleges has an example. So there's a way we could put it together that would really assess for us, how comfortable do our students feel in our building? So a few examples would be, do I feel connected to at least one adult in the building? That would be a sense of belonging. Do I, do I see myself represented in the, what we have on the walls of our school? That would be a second. So that just gives you a sense of the kinds of questions you would ask. It would be anonymous, just so we could see how students are feeling. And it would also be important to give it to adults as well. So it would be everybody in the building would take that. The second is related to some of the work that I know all of you have been doing and we have been doing as a leadership team, which is trying to use this initiatives for developing equity and achievement for students. So sort of a global look at how do we create a culture of inclusivity and equity in our school? And really being intentional about how we're going to roll that up. So that is a, is a big goal that I think we can definitely deliver on in the next second part of the year. The last two, I've, I've actually addressed in prior meetings, sort of less, a little bit more loosely. And they relate to sort of social emotional wellbeing, anxiety and stress, identifying sort of the things that are on the mind of our students. And so the SHAC, the Health Advisory Committee, the School Health Advisory Committee, is looking to create intentional program for students and adults, parents, teachers, that would speak to some of the ongoing primarily mental health issues right now that we're seeing in our school. We do survey work on that after it so we can get feedback on what's working and what isn't. The second is related to the UNHUSafe High School Program, which I think I spoke about, which is an app that we're hoping to perhaps integrate into maybe our peer leading program. And in that app, what we're waiting for now is we're sort of in the contractual stage with them and making sure that the app, they have a new version of it coming out, and don't worry, is going to meet the needs, have the protections that we want and work the way we think it's going to work. So that, Dr. Duros and I, we previewed that app. And we think for elements of it that are really helpful for us, and the piece that we really like is you can analyze the data. So we can go in and see what are, we don't know who's seeing it, but we can go in and see what are students looking at. Students are spending a lot of time and looking at anxiety and stress. Okay, let's, let's dig a little deeper with that. So it allows us access a little bit to what students are thinking. Questions, I, I don't mind if you want, before I move on to the next one, sure.
I was wondering, just with the speaker series, how are you looking at having a common language around SCL? Is there, have you looked at like a package where it's sort of, I'm not sure how far you've gotten yet in looking at those things, but.
We've talked a lot about SCL because what is social emotional learning, social emotional literacy? And so I think part of it, to your point, would be when we say this, this is what we mean, right? Because oftentimes we view it primarily as sort of thinking about anxiety, stress, et cetera. But someone being prepared from an instructional standpoint, executive functioning standpoint, would contribute positively to their social emotional wellbeing, right? So the student who feels disorganized all the time is experiencing a level of stress as a result of that that has little to do with stress and more to do with, can we give you some strategies to organize yourself better? So I think, to your point, I do think creating that common language is going to be a key component of the work that we do.
And I had one more, if, if I can, which was just, is there an adult SCL component here too? Are you looking at something?
That's an interesting.
And/or for families, like if we're talking about common language.
Right, so the, the series would be for students, adults, and adults, which would include families. Family members and teachers. So that piece would. I don't think we've given a lot of thought, at least at my level and my own thinking, of sort of the programming we're going to put out for teachers. But I think the idea is whatever we were creating for students, there would be a component of that that would be directly impactful for adults, family member adults and educators in the building.
Yeah, I was just thinking, because I know it's like, we have been talking about it so much and I appreciate this so much. And my thought was just, when we look at, especially right now, like adults are also struggling. And so you have to be, you know, fill your own cup to, before you can fill another. And so just kind of across the board, just to buy in for it and just the, again, common language. So I know you're kind of, you says, says, create a speaker series. So you're at the beginning of it, but those are just some of the thoughts that came to my mind. Did someone, did, did you have your hand up?
We actually have a application into the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence to go through there. It's called Ruler, and that's their, their training program on social emotional learning. So we heard this week that they've, they've received our application and.
Yeah, we're going in February where, where I'm in, so.
Just along those lines, have you guys looked into like trauma-informed schools and becoming trained for that as a staff?
Yes, so we, we, it was an application process for a grant to, to be part of a cohort to do that work. And I think we had applied, I'm not sure we've actually, that went in in December. I don't think we've heard yet whether we've been accepted as part of that program, which includes the trauma-informs.
Yeah, I only bring that up because I'm thinking about the commonality and the common language, just for teachers and staff and everyone to be, some of the things you're just not always aware of unless you go through that kind of training for literature that's brought up in classes, things like that can.
Right.
It just gives a little different lens.
Absolutely. We, we did have meetings in early, I'm losing track of time, I'm sorry with the break, but in early December with, we did cohort meetings, ninth and 10th grade teachers and 11th and 12th grade teachers where we addressed some of the emotional and mental health needs of our students. And in that, there was some common language, there was a common language document for that work. So we're starting that dialogue.
Thank you.
So the second goal is really related to meeting students where they are and trying to demonstrate growth or show growth in their learning. So the first, Dr. Duros spoke a little bit about the Academic Success Center, and as did I in one of my conversations with you. And that's really focused on tier two interventions. So tier one interventions are those interventions that we do for all students every single day in all of our classrooms to support students. Tier three are those individualized interventions that we do in schools to meet the needs of, let's say, one student where they are and provide them the services and or needs, excuse me, services to meet their needs. Tier two are really those, the academic success, that are, that's where we're trying to get at those students. So the Academic Success Center, students are referred there. They get assistance with executive functioning skills, organizational skills. And right now, it's focused primarily on students who've been out of school for an extended period of time and students who, after quarter one, were identified as perhaps benefiting from the center in the short term. And so that center, there were 14 referrals to that center in early December. And the goal, we analyze the data all along and then track the students who leave the center on how well they're doing, how they're acclimating back to their regular classes. Do we see an impact on the work that was done in the long term in the school? So that's the progression of that center. The peer tutoring, we started, National Honor Society has started that. The block, every block isn't working out, they just don't have the coverage for that. The goal of that is actually to grow that program. That's my goal this spring, right? We have a community service requirement here. COVID has made it hard at times for students to complete those hours and we, and we've, we monitored that for them. But this would really provide students an opportunity to help, assist, offer insight to other students. National Honor Society is offering after-school help because they find that sometimes kids, students want to go to a student, not necessarily go to their teacher. But this would allow us to grow that program to any student who wants to participate. I think the key of a really good, strong peer tutoring program is that we have this idea that our, our academic, that students who are academically strong in the top 10% of our school should be the peer tutors. And I would argue there are a lot of our students who would be very capable peer tutors who are in CP classes, like you don't have to be in honors class to actually be a really good peer tutor. And so the idea would be to try to grow that program, identify kids who have strengths. A lot of peer tutoring is just an ability to make a connection with someone else. So, you know, a junior who maybe struggled their freshman year is actually a really good peer tutor for a freshman who's struggling their freshman year. And so the idea would be to grow that program and think, sort of, think about it in a bigger term than just saying it's National Honor Society kids. And so that's the goal for this spring. Let's just sort of grow that program and have it in place and think about ways we can make it more accessible on a day-to-day basis. And the third is really more, you know, from the adult perspective, just making sure that our practices are aligned, that our modes of communication are in place when we have questions, et cetera. And again, Patty and her office does a great job with this, but it's making sure the adults who are delivering those services are able to have what they need, are communicating properly, and support them. The last, the, the final two here are really related to the acceleration pathway that the Department of Ed put out, which really is grounded in this idea that the unfinished learning that students have, it's going to be very difficult as a school to, to finish all of the learning, right? To keep their language going. It's going to be very difficult to reteach Algebra II to the student in pre-calc from September to June. And that we want to create opportunity to, to meet students where they are and teach them what they need to know in the moment. And so Go Formative, Now Call Formative, is an application that allows teachers to actually do that work, monitor growth in a particular skill area over time. And we, and so the idea would be to use and integrate Formative more into our instructional practices. It's a new program for our teachers at a time where there's a lot of heavy lifting being done. But the idea would be to use Go Formative in a very intentional way to sort of monitor progress, monitor progress and growth identifying, once we identify these sort of unfinished learning moments for students in various classes. Nice part about Formative is it's, you can use it in any class. So there are Formatives, there are these sort of assessments, many of them are already written by other schools. And Formative is in the process of looking into making assessments that would be related directly to the Massachusetts frameworks. They would preloaded for us, which would be great. But that you would use these very intentionally, we can use them in our afternoon acceleration academies as well. And that's the second part of it, which is to create these in-school during, we do acceleration academies in the summer. These would be programs that would be after-school. They're being scheduled on days where we have a late bus to make it accessible to every student who needs it. And they would be taught by Masco teachers. And this would be both for middle school, middle, I think, well, I think, I shouldn't speak for Phil. Middle school have their own acceleration academies and the high school have their own acceleration academies. We're targeting ninth grade at the high school. So there would be an ELA, there would be a math, they last for a period of weeks. And we could actually embed Formative in there as a way to sort of monitor growth in a particular skills area. They would be similar to the summer programs in that the idea is that they are supposed to be really rich, engaging learning opportunities for students. It isn't about sitting and taking MCAS exams every day. That's not what it's about. It's about creating engaging opportunities for students to interact. Not that that doesn't happen in regular classrooms, but this is additional to that and help sort of fill those gaps of that ambitious learning for, for students who we identify as maybe needing a little bit more intervention. Questions?
Thank you so much. This is really helpful. I was wondering, just kind of coming back after the new year and just the first couple of days in, it seems like there's, you know, there's a lot of absence, a lot of kids out, there are faculty out. I'm just wondering, this may be, you know, more about Mike's update, but like, how worried are we about learning this semester and this year? And, you know, I know that everyone's doing everything that they can to deal with it, but I'm just wondering, like, how worried should we be as a community? The kids are going to just not get everything they need to get to move to the next level?
I, you mind if I start? All right, so I'll start and then Mike can jump in here, or Dr. Harvey can jump in here. So what I would say is, what we're experiencing as a community is being experienced by every community in the country, right? So we're not alone in what we're experiencing. And so what that is going to create is, yes, perhaps, you know, five years from now, when our current seniors are jumping off into the workforce, there may be differences in the skills that they have in that moment due to this. But those same losses are being felt nationally. I think that as a community, I think we've been doing very well this year, in fact. We are in a little hiccup period and there are a lot of absences. I also think there are wins from remote, remote learning and that a lot of teachers who are absent have things posted and kids are sort of moving a little bit. I was told one of them, in one particular class, for example, they're doing a lot of like, preparing for the midterm, which we don't have now, and at the time. But the reality is, that is actually a really good activity while a teacher is out, right? Because they can identify what they don't know, they can access old curriculum that they had to relearn. So to me, that's, and it's the middle of the year and they're going to build on those skills to move forward. So if the teacher comes back and can identify what the students don't know, redo a little reteaching, maybe some reassessment and move on. So.
Thank you. We're lucky to have. Okay, that's great. I mean, I know everyone in the world is working on this kind of stuff, but.
And I think, I think the one resource that we would love to have, that we don't have more of, is time.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we, I mean, doing walkthroughs with Meg Hilden around Anglos Department today. And one of the things that Meg noted as we were debriefing our walkthroughs was this, this class is way behind where expected them to be the first week in January. I mean, it's just what it is. Teachers are having to go back and, you know, teach things that were in the previous year's curriculum to make sure that kids could, can do these things now, and it's just taking time.
Okay, and I mean, I know the emotional part is more important, or I think it is.
And confidence and skill level is what actually is going to allow you to move faster. Although you might be three weeks behind now, if, if the students are in a better place to learn and you've built a community of learners where they feel safe, you, once you get, and that, you know, let's get beyond this whatever little hiccup line, which I'm hoping it's, you know, maybe three weeks from data or so, then you can sort of.
I'm hoping.
Maybe not, but that's what I'm hoping. Then we can sort of hit the ground running in those.
Thank you.
That would be my argument, and that has been my messaging. Yeah. To teachers that the emotional, students need to be supported emotionally first. And that might mean foregoing what you had planned today, if you're recognizing that the students are not emotionally present and trying to get them emotionally present, then it will be okay.
Thank you.
And I think the key thing that I'm encouraged by some of these things you're talking about is that you're giving the message that we're recognizing that the kids are coming in, they're going to be absent, they're going to be sick, there's going to be staff out. Recognizing that and actively adjusting our teaching practices.
Recognizing that and actively adjusting our teaching practices to be more flexible, to create alternatives for students. You know, I think, because that can be hard to change the routine you've had for years as an educator and then have to really do a 180 and change, change your whole approach and look at it differently. So it seems like that's kind of the messaging right now, which I think will help with the learning, with the gaps.
Sure.
I.
Just to make this.
I, I don't know. They go, go for the student always first.
Um, yeah, so I'd just like to talk about how, um, for a lot of my classes, a lot of the teachers have been absent. And it's not like we're, I've been impressed by how the classes are still going. Like we're still doing the same stuff that we have been doing and we're picking right back up where we left off before breaks, which is nice because it's not like you're walking in and like you don't know what's gonna happen. So it's nice to have that consistency. Yeah.
Thank you. Great.
So it's more of a speed bump and not a pothole, basically.
Yeah, a hiccup. I like a hiccup, right?
From Massachusetts, I, I gotta use the road. I, I, I think it's important that we.
Mind if we just Tasha had her hand up?
Uh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I, I had just a question about the, um, the acceleration academies. Those are all with identified kids. Those aren't like, I feel like my kids should go in there, so I ask for it. It's you've identified my child that needs it, right?
Yes.
Guidance, guidance of identifying students.
Okay, is, is, is there any, um, because I know that there's a lot of parents out there that are looking for extra help. So is, is that something that we're seeing that the parents are asking for it and they're being denied or how is it?
I think we set up like the criteria, so I asked guidance to give me lists of students that actually got C's, D's.
Okay.
Um, and then we looked through that and then we spoke to teachers as well in regards to who they would recommend. So I just sent out letters today inviting those students to come in to the academies that'll start next week. And um, I got a couple of responses from parents already. Um, asking questions, just clarifying questions, like a student, it's, it's kind of a confusing term for some folks because one of the parents asked if, um, you know, my students on IET doesn't sound like this would be for this, my student. And I said, no, and then I answered this, and I said, no, it's actually for every student that, you know, we've, we've recognized a need. So, did I answer your question?
Yeah, no, I just, I, I'm, I'm, I guess it's probably too early if they're just going out now, like to see if there's a conflict with more people wanting it than are invited into.
Yeah, we'll find out because my letter does say it's limited capacity. So I did send out quite a few letters. Um, and each of the sessions, each of the classes should only have 10 to 12 students. It's designed to be small group. Um, so I'll, I'll see.
Hopefully everybody who's been invited takes up on it. Thank you.
Tom, next, sorry.
Oh, no, no, it's no problem. I was just kind of thinking. So this is kind of, this question's for both of you. Given what we've gone through in the past year, would you agree, or would I be correct in saying that that the processes that we've gone through with remote learning, with the, the teachers being able to post things for the students, we're a more able to keep things moving to, to, you know, weather this, this storm, if you will, for the next, you know, two weeks, hopefully not three, but you know, is that, is that a fair statement? Do you see it moving? I really, I want to know from, I want to hear from you.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's exactly right. Before um the whole pandemic.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know how many like websites and stuff that Masco offers. And so kind of, because I probably never would have done that on my own. So switching into that remote model, um, it allowed for a lot of students to be able to like know where to access information and kind of like help ourselves before bombarding our teachers. And then I think on the flip end, it helps the teachers, you know, be able to put out assignments and it creates like a much easier back and forth between the students and the teachers. And it allows us to get more done. So I think that at making, it makes it more seamless, having gone through the whole remote schooling.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I would concur from a teacher perspective, right? The practice, remember, some of these students maybe didn't have that particular teacher last year. It's a new teacher for them. But the fact that the platform is Blackboard, all the teachers are using the same platform, tend to organize similarly because that was happening during remote learning. Then that, then students do know where to, to look, right? They're not sort of, where am I supposed to go?
Right.
Um, it is going to be part of my messaging at the end of the week, reminding teachers that it's a, you know, someone told me today that they went, oh, they've been in all week, but they went over that on Monday with their students, just in case.
Right.
So, you know, it isn't bad, um, to remind students, we haven't done this in a while. Here's where everything is if you don't use it regularly to organize your classes, but so many teachers do. And I, I knew there are a lot of wins from remote learning from an instructional practice perspective. In-person learning is what, is, 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 in my opinion, you know, the best type of learning. I want kids in front of me. I, I need kids in front of me. I like having a classroom.
What's the healthy balance?
Right. But, but there were wins from, for educators when we had to switch to that from an instructional perspective in creating opportunity for students to be more independent, to learn how to navigate information and know when to ask questions and when they needed help.
And at the same time, being able to recognize those kids that, that aren't as good as knowing where to go.
Correct. Right. Yeah. So I think it, to your point, I think, and I think it has been more seamless because students are like, oh, I know how to do this. I had to do it for a period of time last year, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think, uh, quick, so I think to that last point, I, that's that, like the um academic success in our type of, would probably capture a lot of those kids who we did see did struggle with finding stuff on their own so that they would have that support, hopefully. So all those things are kind of starting to dovetail into each other. It's neat to see. Um, and a sort of technical question, I think I know the answer, but the acceleration academies and staffing those, that was part of our S R funding, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we're all good with being able to.
We're definitely good with the funding. Right now, we're trying to find people. That's the hard part.
I, I was, I was hesitating to ask that part, so.
It's been the hard part. I mean, we've got.
Free teachers.
Three out of six.
Eight.
Three out of eight.
Yeah, three out of eight.
Yeah, it's a big ask because it's been a lot.
Yeah, it's after school and it's, everybody's stressed, so.
Right.
We're still trying.
The other point too about your kids who are maybe can't, aren't able to find the information, unlike when they were all remote, perhaps, they're in a classroom with their peers, um, who they can turn to their peers and say, hey, I can't find that. And so, no, it's right there. So there is a benefit that the students themselves, many of them are in the classroom together and can provide support for each other if there are questions regarding assessments or even the work that they're doing. So the fact that they're actually in the classroom together, even though the teacher isn't there, there is still learning that's continuing in the absence of the teacher in the moment. Hopefully that's a short period of time. All right, so the last one here is really around curriculum instruction and educator growth. So again, I talked, I said, I love talking about assessment. Uh, I love talking about instructional practices. Um, the first two goals really are quite specific in number, if you will notice, um, and that was intentional. We have um provided, we have provided opportunities for people to participate in Formative. Um, they were competing with other professional development. So on the day that we did this, for example, if the teachers could choose sort of from a menu of opportunities, some of the teachers in the English and the History Department uh were finishing up their New Zella training. So they were competing with Formative. And so the, the goal for us is to create those intentional opportunities where all the teachers are available to attend those trainings because getting them trained, once you sit, it, you're going to want to use it, right? And once you really see it in action, you're going to want to use it because it's a really powerful tool. So the first one is really holding a C to a plan to ensure that we provide proper training so that teachers can use this. Both New Zella and um, well, Formative, definitely, and New Zella has a dashboard as well, but both of them have dashboards where we can track usage. So I know from our last training, I believe around 34 teachers went through Formative training. So they spent 45 minutes learning the system with Ryan King and Ben Hodges, who have been great in supporting us uh for our teachers. And there, uh, when I checked on my way out tonight, there, I would say there are about six active users, right, who are using it actively. Um, so for me, that's pretty good. One-sixth of the people who are trained are using it actively. Uh, I'll take that uh to start, but I think if we start actually incorporating it into other things, the acceleration academies and then other places, that's where you're going to grow the bandwidth. And then kids will start asking for it. That's where we need to get to where kids are like, hey, have you ever tried, you know, you could do this in Formative? Um, that's when it starts to catch on. Peer pressure is really powerful. Um, the last two are around the curriculum work that we've started um, in our asking department chairs to evaluate and assess their curriculum. Where is it at? Are we aligning to the Massachusetts framework? And what is the work that we're doing that is committed to sort of uh to our intentionality around culturally responsive teaching practices? And are we including experiences around uh that? And the last one is uh using discipline-specific assessments and having teachers sit with them. It could be common, it could be a common assessment that they all gave. It could be a assessment that is skills-driven. So it's an writing of essay, for example. The essay prompt doesn't have to be the same. They would sit with student work and using a protocol, evaluate the student work. And the goal of that is to develop a common language, a different kind of common language, so that they understand what maybe proficiency, that's my word, would look like in writing an essay. So for example, um, I personally did this uh with a group of teachers at my other, my former school. And um, we got into a really heated debate over what I was considering sort of like a four out of four and what my colleague would have considered a four out of four. And it led to really honest and important discussions around the skills we were looking for and, you know, I was doing ninth, ninth graders to 11th graders, what does that look like? What's the vertical um relationship of the work I'm doing in ninth grade to the work you're doing in the 11th grade? So it allows you to create this common language and have um common expectations for students. And that gets people talking. And instruction improves when people are talking. Um, so that one is really key. And there is time built into one of our delayed openings to try to get that work dumpstered. Uh, the protocol's already done by the department chairs, but getting it dumpstered.
I love it.
Excellent. Great.
I, I can ask Stella a question related to that last one?
Sure.
Do you ever find that, I mean, it don't feel like you, I don't know, it's kind of putting you on spot. But to me, that last one kind of caught my attention because I, having had three students going through the school, I do sometimes hear like distance sees where you think, where you have a peer that's in a comparable class and expectations might feel different. Is that something you also see or is it just my kids?
My kids do.
Um, yeah, I've heard that. I personally haven't um gone through that, but I've definitely heard it from my friends where, like, it just doesn't, it's almost like, it's just different.
Which I do. Like you want to have, you want different flavors with different personalities of teachers, but I like this because it's kind of honing in on a, a level, like what you're, what you're talking about there is um.
What's more subjective out there and trying to make it more objective?
Yeah, I think that's good for kids. Thank you.
I will, just to add to the last one, in, um, it is discipline-specific, so it would fall under the discipline-specific work. But there is a master teacher project related to proficiency levels in world language based on ACTVLE, which is their national organization. The department is working on sort of what you're talking about, which is, you know, what does a not, it's ACTVLE term, but what does a novice world language student, what does that mean? And they're having those conversations using rubrics. What does it mean in a Spanish II class or a French II class or a Chinese class? Um, and so that's work that's ongoing. So I, I do think there's this organic uh work that's being done with, which department as a result of that project. Um, but it's, again, it's a part of us improving, um, is, is having a little bit more common language.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good, everyone? All right. So Stella, you get to be right up next.
So I'm Stella. I'm the class of 2023 Student Advisory Board Representative. Um, the student government and the student council are identifying where we can promote community and connection in a safe way. In these past couple of weeks, um, although it's been stressful for both the students and teachers, um, I just wanted to come up here and thank everyone for doing the best that they can to enable that we stay face to face and keep it as seamless as possible. Um, so here's some of the information that I've obtained from many of the students. First off, there was an overwhelming amount of students who would like to thank Masco for canceling our usual week of midterm tests. Um, as you all know, midterms um had an enormous amount of stress surrounding the actual schedule and the tests themselves. And with the new COVID spike and cases and exposures, had many of the students worried about the possible material that they would be missing um in their classes, as well as their teachers being absent as well. The cancellation of midterm tests has allowed many of the students to take a breath and focus on continuing to keep up in school. Many of the student body or the students appreciate all the hard work that you have all been doing and are grateful for having a voice in the meetings. Um, we are thankful for your care and our efforts to help the community and I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. We love having you, all of the come, we love having your voice here. Um, and I think that you probably have a lot of agreement on that midterms decision for exactly that reason, just the, the angst of have to miss school right before midterms for the week of or whatever the case may be, that edge is taken off. So I appreciate that too.
Stella, you do a really good job at speaking up and asking questions, like not just during your part. And that's, that's awesome. Like you should totally go for that whenever and encourage your peers also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Phil?
Yeah, just, um, there's such widespread rejoicing over the canceling. I guess I'll direct this to the high school principal. I, I think in earlier meeting, you may have mentioned something about, you know, whether we should be doing things like that. Um, so I'm just, gosh, if, if, if it's so universally loved, well, then, do we need to think about making some bigger changes long-term?
Yes, so I think in my last meeting here is, I had just unveiled the changes to the semester schedule, actual schedule.
Right.
To the teachers and then um to the families on that same week. So I'm a very intentional person when it comes to being an instructional leader. And semester exams need to have a purpose. And when we can come to a um consensus as to what they are, then we could have semester exams. Um, I, I've been playing my cards to a lot of people. I'm not, it's not a secret for me. Um, I think that oftentimes semester exams are what I call postmortem assessments, right? Students take them, just look at them and say, oh, what did we not teach well? We should reteach that. Um, and, and that's where it goes. They can be very powerful if they're skills-driven. What are the basic skills we want students to learn this semester? What do they still, what haven't they learned? How do we reteach? How do we reassess? Students could take them to figure out their own personal growth goals for the second semester, which is how I often use mine. Uh, so for one student, it might be around, I was a science teacher, I am a science teacher at heart. One part might be around data analysis. So for one student, they might be focusing really on that and sort of growing that skill for themselves. For another student, it might be using evidence to make a claim. And so there are opportunities here to not. there are opportunities here to not just fall back to what we used to do. And when I started at the high school in those early days, this was the topic of discussion. And I said this at the last meeting and, and I was trying to defer to the group, right? But we've now found ourselves in the second year without semester exams. Um, or they all call them midterms, but they're, they're the end of semester exam. Even the name is different, they have different names. Um, and so there may be an opportunity here to rethink that time.
Okay.
And use it more intentionally and add more variety and opportunity for different teachers to do different things. And that if, if there is a real reason and good purpose to have an end of semester exam, like for example, AP classes to have a 90-minute block to give an AP-like exam, that might benefit AP students, right? Um, but perhaps there's other sort of exhibitions of learning, which is the term we used at my old school, that we could be doing that would better capture what we want our students to be doing. So I think that I'm doing this as the second year without exams, um, at least at this time of year. And there may be opportunity to grow from that or rethink it, um, moving forward. I think all of that is tied to how we grade and the kinds of assessments we give and what it is we wanted, what do stu, what do we want students to know and learn? So I think those are all conversations that I hope to actively engage students and teachers.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think the conversations you had been having up until now, I mean, I, I just have to commend you for that because talk about like the, you know, the Ted Dinersmith, Tendersmith, the kinds, the possibilities of what school could be. And, um, we know change is hard and, and takes time. And it takes work and it takes conversations and it takes trust and it takes all those things. So it sounds like the fact that you had those conversations, there was already sort of this like something in between plan, made it much easier for Masco to make that decision, um, for our students, right? At the, in the middle of a big hiccup. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, it was the one decision I've made where most, I haven't received. No one's come running in my office complaining yet. Um, and that doesn't usually happen. So I, I do think it was well-received. But I think sometimes too, it's well-received because I think there are, there, there was a time where there, there is a group of people here who perhaps are on the fence about exams. And this just may open up a door to rethink that time because we hang our hats a lot on what we think kids need for college. And it's been a long time since I've been in college and I get most of my information now from my son who's in college. And that his experience in college is very different from mine. And so I think we want to be focusing on what is it we want kids to know and learn? What do we want them to be able to do? And that should be our focus. Obviously preparing them for what's next, but that shouldn't, preparing them for what's next shouldn't drive everything we do in the building.
You know, and not that it really matters, but just curiosity. Um, if other districts are doing stuff like that with exams, like is this like a trend now to just in the current climate to canceling midterms or?
So, um, I have a few colleagues who I know who are principals. Um, and they, a few of them had, did not have exams planned and made the decision in September, we're just not going to have exams, right? It's probably not going to be a normal year again, and we're just, we're not going to go back to that. Um, I did receive a call, I won't say from whom today, someone likely choosing the same path forward. And so that conversation was more around, how did you do that? How was that decision made? How was it received? Um, and I do think what helped is that the high school leadership team sort of knows where I stand personally as an educator, um, which is, and I said this at another time, what I personally think is an educator and is not what everybody needs to be doing, um, but that that drives a lot of how I think. So this was not a hard decision for me at all, actually, and, um, or a hard conversation to have with people. But again, part of it was because the groundwork had already been set. People know how I feel about assessment in general. It needs to have a purpose and we need to know what kids, we want kids to know and learn.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. I think we're good to move on. Do you want to keep this?
Yeah.
Onto the financial forecast.
Thank you, Zelli. So I've prepared a preliminary forecast, uh, for FY22. I want to emphasize the word preliminary. Uh, we are roughly 40% of the way through the school year and, uh, almost exactly 50% of the way through, uh, the fiscal year as of today. I will say that this should serve as a, um, a very good indicator for where I believe we'll, we'll end the year, uh, barring any, anything crazy. Um, so the forecast will be updated again, uh, in March and then probably again in April and May. And then we'll do one at the end of the year in June. Uh, so I'm pleased to inform the committee and the community that, uh, I'm currently forecasting the district to end the current fiscal year. Uh, roughly $532,000 favorable to budget. Uh, so pretty substantial and I'll take you through some of the highlights of, um, and the primary drivers of that favorable variance. So here's our, you know, traditional, I'll call it financial statement format. Top sections, revenues, bottom sections, expenditures. In the top section, you can see that I'm forecasting, uh, revenues to end the year. Uh, roughly $54,000 favorable to variance, so that
Center right.
Can't see it. Center right. Yeah, I'm hitting.
It's not.
No, it's not working. Sorry. So the, uh, I'll highlight a couple of the drivers. So transportation reimbursement. When we finalized the budget last year for FY22, we were using a preliminary, um, set of cherry sheets, uh, from the state. Where you got my phone? Thank you. See if I can figure out, how's this big? I think it's the screen.
Yeah, it's a TV screen.
Screen throwing us off. Thank you for the backup. I appreciate it. We did try. Uh, so I've updated, uh, the forecast using the final cherry sheets that came out, uh, mid-July. And you can see that the transportation reimbursement that the state is anticipating that we will receive is roughly $100,000 more than what we had incorporated in the final budget. The other
That, that, but that's still just an estimate.
Yeah, it's a cherry sheet estimate. Yeah. Yeah. Which is what we use to drive our forecasts and budgets.
Yeah, I wouldn't get too excited about that thousand until it actually comes.
Yeah. So the 688 is exactly what they gave us last year in FY21. So I feel pretty confident. And that's why I factored it into the forecast that we'll actually receive it. The next item I'll highlight in the revenue section is the interest income. Uh, as we all know, interest rates are way down these days. That affects our accounts as well. Um, so I'm, I'm anticipating our interest income to be roughly a quarter of, uh, what we had originally anticipated. So from a revenue perspective, again, I'm forecasting, uh, the district to end the year roughly $54,000 favorable to budget. The bottom section is, uh, the revenues and, uh, sorry, the expenditures. And I broke, looking that down at the kind of two different types of expenditures. First, the salary expense expenditures where, which is really driving, uh, favorable variance that we're talking about. So I'm anticipating our salary expense, uh, to be roughly $439,000 favorable to, to, uh, to budget for the year. And, and the next slide, I'll go over the details of the drivers for that. At the high school level, uh, we're anticipating the, um, the non-salary expenditures to be roughly $50,000 over budget. I'm forecasting the middle school, uh, to end the year, non-salary expenditures on budget. And then, uh, district-wide, uh, office expenditures, non-salary to be favorable to budget by roughly $43,000. So maybe if we can bounce to the next slide, Mike, I'll take you through the primary drivers of that $423,000 expenditure variance. So up at the top, so you'll see that the majority of them are salaries. So the first item is, um, we have four staff people that went on a child rearing leave of absence unpaid that we didn't anticipate in the budget. And that's driving $107,000 of that favorable variance. We had six staff, um, term and that weren't reflected in the final FY22 budget. And we replaced those staff and saved $207,000.
When you say term, you mean like retired or left?
Involuntary term, a voluntary term or retirement, any type of
Terminated.
Yeah, left.
Left of their employment here.
Yeah.
Okay.
The third item is, uh, valued at, uh, $36,000 worth of savings. Uh, the .6 FTE drama teacher, um, is no longer here. And we were unable after an ex, several exhaustive attempts to replace, um, that position, we were unable to replace it. And we're saving $36,000 of it, uh, for the year there. We have six unfilled paraprofessional positions, uh, year-to-date. Uh, we actually filled one of those positions today, so we're down to five. And the year-to-date savings for those six positions is roughly $54,000. And then, uh, the last item, a daily substitute savings. We carry a budget of $120,000 a year. It's, this is not unique to Masco, um, that we're having a very difficult time finding daily substitutes. So we've got a pool of daily substitutes. We're using, um, existing staff to fill blocks and paying them, um, their CBA and all that kind of stuff. So I anticipate that we'll save $35,000 for the year as it relates to those, uh, those two line items as well. Uh, so that's what makes up the staff salary savings of, um, a little over, uh, 400 grand. Uh, at the high school, uh, non-salary expenditure line item, um, we're planning to, uh, host an outdoor graduation, much like we did last year. Uh, that obviously unbudgeted, uh, so that's $50,000 that wasn't budgeted. Um, at the district level, Patty's offices, uh, combination of out-of-district tuitions, out-of-transportation for out-of-district placements and special ed consultants district-wide. Patty is, uh, forecasting, uh, the combination of all of those accounts to run $124,000 favorable to budget for the year. Uh, property and liability insurance, I'm forecasting, uh, the district will end the year $26,000 unfavorable. If you recall the conversations we had during the budget last year, uh, I was putting uh, our insurance out to bid. And, uh, as most of you know, we had several claims in the last couple of years, the majority of which involved lightning strikes. When I put the, uh, policies out to bid, we had no takers. Um, so I was, I had to go with our current carrier and I had to pay their rate, which was $26,000 higher than what we had budgeted for. We had, we had to keep, keep insurance. So anyways. So, uh, the next item is running $45,000 favorable to budget and that's school choice and charter schools, uh, sending tuition. That's also a cherry sheet item. So basically what this represents is the cherry sheet figures that I used in the budget were reduced by $45,000 when they issued the final cherry sheet in July. Um, so I've reflected that here, uh, in the forecast, but the cost is point, that can change. Uh, and I have no indication that it will, so I'm forecasting, uh, the cherry sheet figure.
Does that include school choice to us to, like, the tuition we receive from school choice?
No. So, um, this item on the cherry sheet is, um, what we get charged for kids that live in the district that go out.
So less kids are going out of district.
Uh, than were originally anticipated in the preliminary cherry sheet, correct? The school choice income that we get, uh, isn't reflected here.
Okay.
It's reflected as an offset.
Right.
And, and
In the actual budget.
Exactly. Right. And then the last item, the utilities, gas and electric. I'm forecasting the district will end the year, uh, $100,000 unfavorable to bu, budget. Uh, and basically what we have there is a combination of, uh, distribution and supply rate, modest rate increases, um, and primarily, uh, volume increases. So when I came to the district a little over two years ago, roughly two-thirds of our HVAC equipment was either off or not functioning. And that is not the case anymore. 100% of our equipment is running and it has had a tremendous effect on, um, our utility expenditures, unfortunately. But in a good way. So that concludes my forecast. Uh, so again, a little over $500,000 favorable, uh, to budget for the year is my forecast. Uh, and I, you know, quite frankly, don't see it changing drastically between now and the end of the year, but I'll update you in March.
It seems like the big driver is the difficulty with hiring people. Like, just like the, the lack of people out there to hire, that's affecting the whole world is helping us make some money this year.
Um, no, um, partially.
Replacements.
Yeah. So the replacements, our strategy is to always find extremely quali, highly qualified folks at a, uh, staff people at a much more affordable place on the salary schedule. Um, and that's what I think you're seeing, you know, at least in the top two items. Uh, but to your point, Tasha, you, you're right. We're having a really hard time, you know, filling other positions, particularly power positions, uh, which is driving a substantial amount of savings as well.
So higher-paid senior people are, for whatever reason, moving on. And if we're lucky enough to replace those positions, you would think that they're at a more favorable spot on the pay scale.
Yeah. So normally what we do, uh, Dom is, uh, and you'll see this in budget presentation, for example, in a couple of weeks. When we have, uh, a staff person retire, for example, uh, we'll factor into the budget, that person's replacement at master's step five or master's step seven, which is typically a 40 to $50,000 savings. And then that forces us to be real, all of us to be really diligent about, you know, the hiring process and trying to keep the overall increase at a reasonable and affordable level.
And that's an every, every year occurrence, it's just
Yeah.
But would you agree this year, you're, it's, it's, you know, you've, you've seen more of those? So that would kind of
I, we've seen, uh, in these numbers, we've seen more than we expected.
Right.
Um, in the budget presentation in a couple of weeks, uh, unless something changes in the next week or so. I, I only have, uh, one retirement that I'm going to factor in the type of reduction that I just talked about.
It stands to reason in the field like this, that when someone leaves, they're replaced by
Right.
you know, a newer person who's bringing different skills and, you know, but less experience.
Usually less, less experience, not always, but usually.
Uh, Jeff, do we have contracts for gas and electric?
We do. We have supply contracts. Yep.
And you happen to know how old those are?
Uh, one is one month old. I just renegotiated it and one is 11 months old. And the supply rates are modestly higher than the previous set of contracts.
And, you know, we look at 532,000 favorable variance. But shouldn't we be looking at it as more like 170,000? Because we use three sixty-one to fund E and D to fund the current budget. So we kind of need three sixty-one variance this year to keep that funding source level. So it's really a hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, that's one way to look at it. You'll see in a couple of weeks that, assuming the E and D that we've submitted for certification comes through, I still haven't heard back and it's been months. You'll actually see it, a modest increase in the E and D that I'm going to propose we use for the FY twenty-three budget. So, you know, assuming that holds true year to year to year, which we can't rely on. But that's certainly not the case between FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three budget. I think it's, it's, it's pretty good news. Certainly better than the alternative.
Makes sense.
So I'll update you again in month with another forecast and I can get, you know, increase my comfortableness as we get closer towards the end of the year. Pretty solid.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we can move on to Dr. Harvey's superintendent's update.
So first off, we're going to talk about the new CDC guidance for COVID isolation and quarantine. On December twenty-seventh, the CDC issued new guidance relative to the amount of time COVID-positive individuals need to isolate and unvaccinated close contacts need to quarantine. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the State Department of Public Health released updated guidance on responding to COVID-nineteen scenarios on December thirtieth, which made for a great vacation read. That reflects the CDC's guidance. Earlier this week, we sent the following guidance to families that reflects all of this new information. So guidance for positive cases, positive cases will now isolate for five days instead of ten and can return to school, work, or regular activities on day six, so long as they're either asymptomatic or their symptoms have improved. They are fever-free for twenty-four hours and they continue to wear a mask through day ten. There's no need for public health nurses or school nurses to verify symptom improvement as occurred by day five with cases from students. Everyone should know to stay home if they are sick with a fever, cough, congestion, sore throat, et cetera. When students return to school and school-associated activities, they will continue to follow the mask mandate currently in effect and will need to socially distance while lunch for an additional five days. And both schools have designated spaces for students to socially distance during lunch.
Some additional five days, so up to day ten, you mean?
Yep, up to day ten, they have to continue to wear a mask and to socially distance during lunch.
And we already had those spaces set up.
Those are the socially distant spaces that we've already identified. So then quarantine guidelines for asymptomatic close contacts. So anyone who is an asymptomatic, fully vaccinated, close contact are exempt from testing and quarantine response protocols, that's the same way as it has been before. So at this time, fully vaccinated is defined as two weeks following the completion of the Pfizer Moderna series or two weeks following a single dose of Johnson and Johnson's Janssen vaccine. So doesn't count boosters so far. Unvaccinated school-based close contacts, test and stay will remain in place for unvaccinated students and adults who are identified as school-based close contacts. The testing period, though, has been shortened to five days from the seven that it was before. That's five days from the last known exposure date. Students who participate in test and stay will be eligible to attend school and school-based activities as long as they continue to receive negative tests. Students who are eligible to participate in this program will be notified by a school administrator or their school nurse. And then unvaccinated out-of-school close contacts. If you're unvaccinated and have been identified as an out-of-school close contact, you are not eligible for test and stay. But the quarantine period has been reduced to five days from seven, which was. You can exit quarantine on day six, so long as you can produce a negative COVID test and you have remained symptom-free for that time. Although the PCR test is the most accurate form of testing and is advised, and this part of, this is a change too, antigen testing will be accepted as proof as well. So proof of negative results need to be forwarded to the school nurse prior to returning to school. And that means a copy of the lab results or a picture of the actual negative test. Symptomatic close contacts, that actually has not changed at all, it's anybody who's presenting with symptoms is advised to stay home and quarantine and to seek a test as soon as possible. Again, it's this question about at-home testing, at-home tests are unofficial results and the local board of health cannot follow up with at-home tests and perform appropriate contact tracing. Those obviously don't get reported to the state board of health. Positive cases identified through an at-home test should isolate for five days and notify their own close contacts. PCR testing within forty-eight hours of a positive at-home test is advised for confirmation of that at-home test result. All right, so next, moving on to the rapid tests and masks for Maskenomet employees. So on December twenty-second, DESI made a supply of KN ninety-five masks available to interested school districts in Massachusetts. Maskenomet received its supply of ten thousand KN ninety-five masks on December twenty-ninth. Thanks to Jeff Sands for going to pick them up, brought the minivan and loaded it up and delivered them to school during the holiday break. And then on December twenty-ninth, DESI announced that it procured rapid COVID-nineteen test kits for all K to twelve employees in the state. These tests were made available for pickup on January first. Thank you to Keith Serelstak, our HVAC technician, for volunteering to go pick them up and saving me the trip to Franklin because that's where we had to go to get them. He went on New Year's Day to go get them.
Thank you, Keith.
So we had one test and thirty masks available for all employees to pick up here at Maskenomet on Sunday, January second, from noon till three at central office. Thanks to Patty for helping me distribute masks and tests. We had over a hundred employees come pick them up on Sunday. And then Jackie Bolduc and I spent Monday staffing a location in the high school for any employee that wasn't available on Sunday to pick up the test masks. So as of this afternoon, we had over two hundred employees receive an at-home test and the thirty masks courtesy of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
So if that led to teachers staying home? Positive tests.
There were, so there were, I'm going to talk about, so the, in broad terms, the numbers of staff that we have out. There were people that came to pick up the tests on Sunday that then were out sick on Monday.
Was it what you would have expected or a larger number?
Well, I mean, I think what we, what's the state pulling?
Are you talking about?
For staff?
Staff that tested positive.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're pulling, the general population is like a twenty percent positivity rate right now, we weren't that high.
On Monday, I think we had twelve staff out, which is roughly four percent of our total staff population. So it wasn't bad, but it's, Mike's going to probably go into it, but it's increased.
It's going up, it's not going the right way. So let's talk about case numbers, so as we turn from break, we're seeing the impact of the latest surge on our school operations. The latest challenge is getting accurate information on positive cases, explain a little bit why. In the past, we've only reported positive cases that came as a result of a PCR test. And these, these are the tests that are confirmed at a lab or at a doctor's office. Positive PCR tests are catalogued in Maven, which is a statewide COVID-tracking database that's run by the Department of Public Health. For the past two years, our practice has been to track these cases that were reported to us via our local public health departments from now. This week's COVID case report is consistent with that practice, the numbers I'm going to, going to give you in a little bit. However, I must say that the numbers I've received from our local public health departments are not reflective of what we're seeing and hearing in the school health offices. And they're very likely to be under-reported. So for example, we had over two hundred students absent at the high school today. Sixty students absent at the middle school. These numbers are dramatically higher than the official counts that I'll present in a minute. Because of this discrepancy, I've decided to temporarily suspend those at four o'clock in the afternoon. They're just not, it's just not accurate right now, I know it's not. And I'm trying to, trying to figure out how to get a better sense of getting a handle on these numbers. Part of this, we think, is really just the prevalence of at-home tests. And so people are taking the at-home tests, but they're not going to follow up with a PCR test. So those reports don't get to Maven, they don't get to the local departments of public health. And so what we're getting in the nurse's office is a phone call that says, you know, Johnny's positive, he's not coming in. Then responding to them with, this is what you need to do, you know, it's at least five days and make sure that the, you know, symptoms are resolved. But it's, it's like two hundred students, so we're, you know, handling, you know, dozens of calls per day that our nurses are making and they're, they're doing the best they can, but it's, it's a rising tide for sure.
The two hundred students, that's two hundred absences, not two hundred COVID-positive.
Right, two hundred, just absent.
There's a lot of sick.
Or anything, could be the flu, could be anything else.
So when a student self-reports or parent self-reports as COVID-positive, are you saying there's no tracing that goes on?
We can't.
Because it's not considered?
No, there's no tracing that goes on from, from the state level. And honestly, with that number that we're getting, we just don't have the staff to do it.
Yeah, that's where I was going to go with my next question, what do you even do with that?
We don't, so we're still continuing our practice of when it comes through Maven and we get those from the public health, then we're going through with our contract tracing. Yes, but that's really all we can, we have the ability to handle.
Yep, the PCR and Maven and the combination of all those things allowed us to set up kind of a team and workflow that allowed us to really track and identify close contacts in a really systematic and timely way. And now, and it's all changed in the last two weeks.
Right.
With these, and we're going to have to figure out how to, how to redo it, and we will. But I doubt it'll be as accurate as it had previously.
And for now, though, like, so, because there has been, you know, questions where like, wait a minute, I think I was a close contact, I haven't been notified. And I know that there is, there's always been like a little bit of a lag because you have to confirm this, get the information. Are we doing that still for any that are reported through the public health department?
Yes.
But if they were self-reported, we can't.
They're self-reported, as I said, they don't get to Maven, DPH doesn't have any record of it. I mean, it's, and again, just by the sheer volume of those calls are, the number, I think on Monday was around sixty-five or something like that, was that?
And the ones.
Yeah, that was to the health.
So the ones that are official, though, have you been able to keep up with that or is that also backlog, because it's so overwhelming? I'm just curious for people who might be.
Mary Jo does the contact tracing at the high school, so.
So the, anything that has officially come in from the Department of Public Health has been traced up through three-thirty this afternoon. And so if anything has come in since that hasn't been traced. And we're using the same protocol for those. So also because our tests are symptomatic, intestines day is reported to the Department of Public Health, that will get, we trace, we don't wait for that to come through from the Department of Public Health. We trace that student immediately knowing it is being reported because it was in our test and stay program and/or our symptomatic testing program. So there's no delay, if we do the testing here, it's confirmed here by our nurse, there's no delay with the Department of Public.
But it's the, but the vast majority of talking about now is not that. Been dealing with historically. And if I could just emphasize one, one point that Mike mentioned earlier. We're not staffed for this. So this is literally, this is like where we spend.
All hands on deck.
The majority of our day. It's like dozens of people.
And let's hope it's short-term, it's a spike and.
Yeah, I mean, we can't sustain.
We're hoping we can't sustain it.
We can't sustain it because we have to get other things done.
They're an S or, and person out there to, for a COVID.
It's just, it's impossible to find people.
That's one of those people you can't find. Oh, sorry.
I interrupt.
I think we're, I think we're going to ask the same question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Okay, I think the one. Ask his question if it's the same one that you guys.
Just that I think we're doing this, but we, we are informing our Masco community at least, what people need to do if they take one of these at-home tests. I just read was sent out on, last week, on New Year's Eve, I think, from me. The principals did something Sunday night and then something else. So the day and I'm. Expectation is, they're doing the right thing. This will be the fourth time we're going to tell everybody this is any of their close contacts. Okay, I just wanted to. I thought I'd seen multiple emails that contain that, but I just wanted it, you know, out there, thank you.
My question is, has there been discussion as to when we reach critical mass on this thing? And contingency planning, like, is it, how many teachers and how many students where we say, okay, we're going to take a snow day, you know, or we're going to.
We don't have a number yet, I think that's, that's what we're looking at. It's part of, I'll get into sharing some of those numbers at this point. But, you know, it's a real possibility that we may have to call school because we don't have enough staff. It could come in the next week.
And we have to communicate and problem solve and engage the ESE, we just can't. Before we do, they have a protocol that we have to follow, so.
My question was actually slightly different, which was, is there a point at which it just doesn't make any sense to do the contact tracing anymore? And is that, is that required by DESE or, I just.
DESE expects it, but, you know, our, our thing has been through the Maven numbers that we're getting are manageable, we can continue to do that, but they're.
We recognize only a fraction of the people who actually have it.
Interestingly enough, we, there was a call for superintendents and assistant superintendents with Commissioner Riley at three o'clock this afternoon. And one of the things he talked about was contact tracing. And they're working with DPH to try to develop a way to get rid of it. And he's, he basically said, we're working on it, stay tuned, we should get back to you in the next week or two. I can't imagine what that is, but.
At some point, it's going to have to go, right? It's going to be like someone's.
It's not doable. That's the issue when you have that many self-reported cases.
I think we officially lost the control that we had because.
Sounds like it. Well, now people can't verify either because there's like no PCR tests to be had. It's not to get quickly.
The lines are long, so. Getting back to the chart before, so since my last report was December fifteenth, since then, we've had fifty-five positive cases reported.
Where's December fifteenth on that?
It's the seven.
Okay.
Over here. So we've had fifty-five total. Since then, twenty-nine of those cases were reported over the holiday break. And it was one of the things that we did have going for us was, the break was long enough that it actually took care of the isolation period for a lot of students. You know, so between twelve-twenty-three and January second. So, you know, twenty-nine of those fifty-five were not in school while infectious, there was just no way to do it. You know, and as I said, the length, the CDC shortening to five days, you know, allowed people, allowed students to come back on Monday if they were, if there were symptoms at that point.
Which means there was no in-school close contacts, which means there was.
There was no test and stay.
And I'm the administrator on duty this early morning this week and it's been nice and quiet, so. Benefit of it, I still got to show up at six, but, yeah.
Always be the administrator. Just make sure to tell you when it's.
Stuff in the. Short straw, yeah.
Scott Morrison's in control of that list. Moving on to the case counts by month, uh, for the month of January, we're at 34 positive cases. And you think about that, just, you know, that's actually about half of what we had for the first, you know, three months of school. Of the 27, there are 27 middle school cases in December and January, 15 of those came after December 23rd, again during the, the break. Uh, 17 of the 25 high school cases in December and January were also after December 23rd. So, yeah, we got some pretty large, um, you know, uh, email dumps from BH over break. List with lots and lists of names. 14 of the reported cases in January are faculty. Um, and that's, the number of absent faculty has been climbing, uh, throughout the week. Uh, today, we had 17 faculty members absent at the high school and 12 at the middle school. Uh, we're gonna continue to monitor the numbers and our goal is to remain fully in person as long as we possibly can. But, you know, again, the questions of not having subs. And, you know, um, just these numbers, what were they on Monday? They've, they've gone up.
There was a total of 12 staff, not just faculty.
Both, both buildings and from the whole district.
Right, for the whole district.
And now we're up to 29.
Are you guys talking about like alternative things to do with finding classes or?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's, you know, our, our, our assistant principals do, do a good job of this. It's something that's part of what their responsibilities are anyway, um, that, you know, we, we don't normally see things that, that are this high, but, you know, during the flu season, we can see a Friday in, you know, January or February where we have numbers of staff members out and, you know, have routines for how we cover classes. But again, we don't have a lot of subs to do it. You know, we've got a few college kids who are here on break working and we're, you know, throwing them into cover classes. I mean, it's, you know, it's all hands on deck. I don't, gonna volunteer to go cover classes uh, later on this week to, you know, both principals, because.
Melissa, I end up, and I'm also just gonna make a note, I think that we're probably gonna be discussed, we have probably more questions from all of you. So can we just raise hands to make sure that people have a chance to speak when they're ready to speak and not kind of cutting? Thank you, Melissa.
So I, I just want to clarify and question, the faculty cases, are those who, are those include people that took the tests given out by TSC?
It does, yes.
Okay, so, whereas the students do not count.
Students we didn't, and, you know, just, we're just looking, those faculty cases are our own in-house tracking that called, you know, those, those 29 that I just talked about that are absent, that includes family sick as well. There are others that we know that are sick, but not COVID-related. I mean, it's just, you know, so we have our normal, normal sick and then another number.
So the January faculty number is the only one that's accurate? Based on?
I don't even know how completely accurate that is either. There is, we're getting a lot of anecdotal reports of who's in and who's out and.
We're relying on what they're telling us. As opposed to historically, it was that PCR and Maven process that we could kind of lock in on.
Count on.
Yeah.
Now, that's the other piece is that faculty don't necessarily live in our communities. So our local boards of health don't even know about them. They don't get their data. Unless we actually ask them to go look.
I was presumptive that we were gonna have more questions.
No, it's been a, it's been a long week.
Yeah, oh goodness, yeah.
I just can clarify for clarifications. Today there were 29 staff out, right? You've told this before, but what's the rough number of staff in the district, like 150?
There's 150 teachers.
Okay.
And there's, uh, 305 total staff that includes everybody, including coaches.
So it's like 10%.
So excluding, excluding coaches and substitutes, but including teachers and paras and administrators, you call it 250?
Okay, so 29 out of 250, whatever that is. Okay, thank you.
So speaking of coaches, um, with sports, I, I, I had heard that indoor track had a bit of, had a bunch of cases. And again, like in a situation, that's me kind of hearing as a parent. I don't know how many you guys know about and if that's, but it's a team, so clearly the coach knows. And how are those, there, I did see there was an email from John Delanis, but I didn't get to look at it yet. Is that being handled differently than the school day situations? How are we doing?
It's, it's the same, um, same process. If it comes through Maven, then we'll. Then we'll contact trace and we'll know. You know, I think we, our discussions with, uh, Julia LaBelle, um, are that if a third of the team tests positive, then we have to quarantine the entire team. That's the, that's the rule that she got from the Department of Public Health. So we haven't hit that yet. Looking at Mary Jo's.
And then what about?
But that's what we're looking at.
Is anything, like indoor track being an example with the weather being not so crazy, any decisions around where they do indoor track? Is that MIAA or do we have any say on that? If they're indoor or outdoor?
I mean, that's, that's ultimately.
Meats that got it.
Yeah.
Those meats are generally inside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're at whatever facility can handle the indoor meat.
Yeah, just thinking, I'm thinking.
Yeah, I mean, it's, indoor is indoor. So, yeah, like, a lot of them do go to the Reggie Lewis or.
There are, there are a few schools in the NEC, I, I believe, that have a fieldhouse. Which is unique.
Foster. What about, it's, I'm just gonna say in that a third of the team, that would include the, obviously the home testing also.
It's not just the stuff coming in through Maven.
That's what I'm wondering.
And that's, I think it's the Maven piece, right? Or is that everything?
So, um, if we get reports of positive cases through the nursing, through the health office, and it is being tracked, because we have to track our athletes that are testing positive because the email was about return to play. That's the email that went out that you can read. Not an opportunity to read yet, um, and, um, I don't want to insinuate you weren't gonna read it. But, so if it is being reported through the health office, which I want to thank our community for reporting it to the health office, even if it is an antigen test.
That's what they're supposed to do.
Yep, that's what they're supposed to do.
If we identify that there is approximately a third of the team that has indicated that they are COVID positive, regardless of the type of test that we are taking, then we would have to call the, we would reach back out to our Department of Public Health, confirm that, and then there would be, um, a quarantine.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking about this idea of, in general, the close contact piece too, like, because we've kind of, it's just gotten out of hand where people are self-reporting and all of this. I feel, uh, so much of this depends on people may, doing the right thing themselves. It has all along, but even more so, I feel right now. And so could we be asking people to say, if you know, if you're positive, can you reach out to the people you think you've been in close contact with?
Part of the message.
Okay, there's so much information.
I mean, I was watching the news tonight before I came here and the CDC is already looking at changing again.
Yeah.
So.
Because it's, it's too much to be, it's so much, it's already been so much to handle and it's just getting out of hand.
Hopefully by the time we have a handle on it, it'll be over. In two weeks, as for Dominic, for three, that, that's the window. It's an over and under.
I hope.
You're likely to be okay, it's just.
Getting sick.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, I don't, I had been tracking that as well. I, I, and because of the reporting, the way it's coming through lately, I'm not getting all the vaccination info, but, but a lot of, a lot of those 55 were vaccinated.
Yeah. Right, they're just not.
Right, they're just not, right.
There are other questions?
Are you done?
I am.
Oh. Don't you have more to go?
Terry, I can ask you to speak just a little bit, just maybe to repeat from the last meeting, what the situation is with the, from the question from the audience, the situation with the waiver and other steps that we would need to go through to actually get the waiver approved? Would you mind just really quickly?
Maybe I'll rehash.
Is that already?
To where we are and then you can take it.
Okay.
So the week, I think it was the, the week of the, um, of the 7th, we hit the 80% threshold.
Yes.
And, uh, we submitted the attestation form that was required to the Department of Education. I think we updated the committee on the 15th, uh, during that meeting. Uh, end of day on the 17th, we received, uh, approval of that waiver. And then I'll hand it, hand it over to you. So we have, we have, uh, we've reached the threshold and we've, have an approved waiver.
Correct.
And that's hurdle one.
That's hurdle one. So the next piece is the town of Boxford, um, has a local public health ordinance in place that all, um, all people need to wear masks where they're in, um, any public space, I think. I have to look at the actual details, but it's definitely covers this building. Back in October, um, we had conversations with the Boxford Board of Health that, you know, at that time, they would be receptive to, um, us, allowing us to have vaccinated, uh, students and any individuals actually, um, go unmasked in the building. It said back in October, um, so, but they also wanted to know what our plan was for ensuring that unvaccinated people continued to be masked. You know, we talked about this at all, at other prior meetings about, there's a lot of challenges with that as well. Given where we are right now, I, I'm not going to the Boxford Board of Health in the, you know, for the foreseeable future to ask, even ask the question at this point. It's just not, not sensible at all, so.
Thanks, I just wanted to make sure that we covered that question, to answer the question.
What about the, uh, was there a January 15th DSC list coming up? Has, have they pushed that out yet or?
He hasn't pushed it out. He spoke to it today at our, on our call and said, stay tuned, beginning of next week, he's gonna have some information for us on the January 15th deadline on the, the mask.
So even if we did go to Boxford, they're just gonna say we're waiting to hear. I mean, let's be real.
It's possible, yeah.
But they'll certainly ask us what our plan is.
Which, you, you were at other meetings where the, you, you even asked the question and no one had any answers, like how is something like that policed? How is that, it, it, hipper laws and privacy law?
Exactly.
It, it, it's, it's almost engineered that way, so you, there's no way to.
In my mind, it, it, it all comes back to the honor system, right?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Brain smut.
I, I, and one other question was just, just, it's on our website, have the COVID, there's like a couple links in the page called COVID-19 information. So I'm still, I'm assuming, I know it's changing so frequently that it's hard to even think about.
I would caution and just say, you know, we've been, there was a discussion about updating that.
There was.
Today.
Yeah.
And I just said, we gotta lay off our nurses because they're the ones who own that page.
Okay, I don't know who puts that there.
They're. And phone calls and talking to parents and everything else, so.
Okay.
Let's also remind ourselves that two of the three nurses are brand new to the district.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Less than two months.
The nurses that are on that page prior to.
I just thought that even if, like, because like, from a user side, like, what you guys sent that had the, um, Julia LaBelle's explanation and then the letter that, uh, that you sent this week that kind of gave it, like, if I'm a, if I have a situation in my home where I need to figure out what to do, that's what I'm gonna look up. I, I was thinking, it'd be nice if they were just dropped up there.
We'll try and get it up there, but.
That's where I would go as a parent, is all I'm saying. But I, I can't, I mean, I'm.
Well, Jackie was looking at it today too.
So I don't know if it made it.
I'm not trying to ask for the overburdened people to do more, but I just, from a user side, that's where.
No, and we get it, it's just, it was one of those things we looked at, so look, we gotta prioritize what we're doing right now. It's, we're in triage mode, so.
Yeah, anyway, that was my last question. So, all right, I think that, thank you for the update. Thank you for, oh my goodness, the incredible, um, overwhelming work you guys have to deal with this new hiccup. Let's hope it's just a hiccup because we really were on a good track for a little bit. And.
Yeah, thank you all. Sounds like everybody really stepped up to do, like, stuff over vacation and, um, we appreciate.
It wasn't much of a vacation for a bunch of us.
Yeah, that's really unfortunate. Let's hope it's over soon, because I know you all need a break.
Okay. So, subcommittee reports. I don't think there's probably very much because we've had a vacation. Does anybody of our, raise your hand if you have an update as a subcommittee member?
Oh, I.
Maybe you just want to tell us when your next meetings are. So I'll do that. Terry, when's your next community release?
A week from tonight, the 12th, at 6:30 by Zoom.
Okay, and that, I'll post that.
Yeah, thank you.
It has the community forum at the beginning.
Yes.
Uh, budget, when is our, do we have one scheduled?
January.
26th, that.
Six.
Five o'clock?
Yep.
Which probably should post as a, as a full meeting, so that, because we would highly recommend to all people, not that you shouldn't come to all of our meetings, but this one is with the, um, department head, so it would be good to hear what they have to say.
It's gonna be at five?
Five PM. Excuse me, yeah, to, to get through everything.
Um, Bill, do you have an antiviruses and setup?
Not yet.
That's all right. Melissa, policy?
So right now, we're scheduled for, um, Monday, the 10th at 7:30, but Mike, you know, if the, it doesn't work anymore.
It's all good for me.
Okay.
The one, seven or 7:30 is fine.
I just, after your update tonight, I didn't know if it was appropriate.
It's fine. Gotta keep moving.
Life is already wrecked anyways.
All right.
Got a moving target.
Our meeting's been posted, so.
All right, and any other liaison updates?
So Topsfield, um, met with the FinCom and the Select Board on Monday night. Um, just to give a brief update, and, um, I think that they're well-received. You know, we were reminded by the FinCom about their guidance. But they went. And, um, that wasn't unexpected and then I thought the, I thought the Select Board was the more protective meeting.
Thank you for that, that was well-led by.
Good for Topsfield for getting a skating rink downtown. Just give them some props, that's awesome.
Yeah, if you.
Unusable.
Little wet, beautiful.
I want to get some koi fish in front of me.
All right. All right, uh, anything else there, Terry, or consent? Other people, all right. Um, so consent agenda, we have three items. Does anybody need anything pulled? Can I make a comment about the UN trip without pulling it?
Sure.
Um, I just want to comment on the Model UN trip that us approving it doesn't require them to go. I want to make that clear because there's a lot of moving parts.
Get, get out of here.
And monitor closely. I mean, if we're to give approval tonight, that doesn't mean they're definitely gonna go. Carabazos.
Common sense is going to be.
Yeah, and I, I'm sure we'll be talking about it between now and, um, beginning of February.
So I just want to make that clear for the organizers that we're not saying you have to do it, we're just saying you have, that we trust you to, to know what's the right decision. All right, so we have approval of the December 15th minutes warrants in the amount of $1,254,399.85. And approval of Model UN field trip on our consent agenda.
So moved.
Tasha moves to approve. Second. Terry second. All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Opposed. We have Carolyn is absent.
We don't need to do. There's nothing to talk about.
Okay, enough fun to. All right, so we do not have a reason for an executive session tonight since there haven't been, as, action that we've had a chance to look at since our last meeting, so I am adjourning our meeting at 8:51 PM. Happy New Year.
Ooh, record.
Yes.